Welcome, everyone. Today is Monday, March 4th, 2024, and this is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Planning Board. Chairwoman Kerzak, can you please call this meeting to order?
Yes, this meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of the meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and post on Municipal Bulletin Board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken in the following manners before the Board. Fire exits are located on the east and west sides of council chambers as well as the back of the building. I will ask anyone with a cellphone or other device to kindly silence your device for the duration of the meeting. This meeting is being recorded by AP-TV for your viewing pleasure in the near future. Please join me for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. I will now take roll call. James Bonanno.
Here.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Good job.
Eric Gallapo is absent this evening. Jim Henry.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Daniel Shinameo.
Here.
Jennifer Souter.
Here.
Vice Chair Mike Goonan.
Here.
And Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak.
Here. All right, the first item on the agenda is a resolution for approval of 138, 140, 144 Borden Avenue for the resolution. Anyone have any concerns about the resolution before we take a vote? No? All right, can I get a motion to approve the resolution for 138, 140, 144 Borden Avenue?
Second.
Can I get a second? Okay. James Bonanno.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Daniel Shinameo.
Yes.
Jennifer Souter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Goonan.
Yes.
And Chairwoman Kerzak.
Yes. All right, the next item is a resolution for approval for 614 Cookman. This is an item where there were some issues that came up after the presentation. If Mr. Beekman would like to explain what happened, then I'll chime in if need be.
All right, so just to get everyone up to speed, there were some concerns about the representation of the applicant having two units and how those units are oriented. And it sounded like the testimony was that they're oriented side by side, which the release that the Board thought they were approving was related to horizontal units as opposed to vertical units. So Jack has spoken to the applicant, and the applicant is going to have to come back and continue some of his presentation to the Board so the Board understands exactly what they are, they're going to be renting from the property owner. Because as you recall, this was a tenant making application of a pre-approved site plan that was approved for SAC. I'm not sure what the name of the entity that owns that property. So Jack, anyway, originally, we're going to have it as a discussion and have that, the applicant come back, but it's a notice issue. It's factual issues, it's additional testimony, so they have to notice because it wasn't carried at that last meeting because the expectation was that tonight there would be an approval of a resolution as opposed to additional testimony.
All right, so I'd like to get a, I mean, does anyone have any questions before we move on? Okay, then I'd like to make a motion to carry this application for April 1st. That's, the applicant does know about that?
The applicant knows, the applicant understands that they do have to provide notice for the project.
Right, that is with notice. So that's in the paper and notices to, I believe, it was almost 57 neighbors.
Yeah, there was quite a few.
It was a lot.
There was quite a few.
It was quite a few. And besides that, I think that that's, that's all. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to move it to, to carry to April 1st.
James Bonanno.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Daniel Shinameo.
Yes.
Jennifer Souter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Goonan.
I don't think I know.
And Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak.
Yes. All right, up to applications for 512 and 514 Summerfield. At this point, Mr. Beekman will speak.
Before you go on, Mr. Goonan, talk to Jack. You may be able to.
Yeah, I'll watch the video.
Yeah, watch the video.
I just didn't know if it was going to come back up, so I'll watch it.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
It's okay, because I don't think it's new. I don't think that the information that's going to be provided is 100% new. So I think that, I mean, it's not like amendment or anything like that. I think it's going to be, I think that, Mike, you're going to have to just watch it if you want to participate.
Yeah, right.
Okay. All right. 512, 514 Summerfield Avenue.
Yes, so that is, if you recall, back when the applicant made the application for the amended site plan, we required them to come back to this meeting and present on the buffering that they were going to have around the transformer. The submission was just delivered last week, Marie, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so obviously, it wasn't submitted in time. But because we carried it on the record so that there was no notice necessary for the continuation of that portion of the amended site plan, it's going to be carried until April 15th.
April 15th.
All right, so this will be carried to April 15th without notice.
Without notice, that's correct.
Without notice. I'd like to make a motion for this to be carried to 415 without notice. Can I get a second?
Second.
Just a quick question. As I recall this application, they were going to provide a survey of what was there. Do you remember that, or am I mistaken?
So they were to provide an update to exactly what you're saying, not only above ground but below ground utilities and everything, yes. I'm not sure, I haven't looked at the plan, so I don't know if that's in what they're submitting for the buffering. But that was a condition of the resolution of approval to have the transformer servicing bangs, the plans, before they get their CO, they have to provide that.
They, on the submission that they made, they show the electrical line coming from 520, from the north side of 527 Bangs, and it is in a straight line. As I recall, what they had shown originally was not in a straight line. It went out into the parking lot and then came back in to the area of the transformer.
Well, let's, so before we get too in-depth with that, maybe save that for a question for the applicant.
Fine, thank you.
But Marie, if you can reach out to Andy Carras and maybe just let him know to make sure that the plans that they're submitting identifies the exact location of those utilities.
All right, we need to have him come back and, need them to come again.
Yeah, yeah, sir, if there's a question about it, obviously, you can ask that.
Okay. Okay, so wait a motion, wait a second. James Bonanno.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Daniel Shinameo.
Yes.
Jen Souter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Goonan.
Yes.
Chairwoman Kerzak.
Yes. All right, the next item we have for consideration is the redevelopment plan for 1201 Memorial Avenue. I'm sorry, Memorial Drive.
Good evening, folks. I'm here again on this redevelopment plan. Thank you very much for coming out for this topic. I've got a really brief presentation just to help walk us through this evening. Did it turn back off? Yeah. Mine's on. Yours is on. There you go. Okay, almost. Just got to get that presentation up. One second. I'm sorry, I don't know why this is not mirroring my screen.
You might have it upside down, multiple screens, it seems it's a different screen.
Oh, hold on. Okay, here we go. Now we're cooking with gas. Okay. So, folks, we're here tonight to review, okay, we're here tonight to review the revised redevelopment plan, and it's really principally for one reason, and that is a correction of the plan for something that was just quite simply an oversight on my part. As you may recall, the building looks like that, thank you. And as you can see, it is four stories from there. If you look, and I'll show you a better image in just a moment, behind the language planning board review. Sorry, I don't know why it's.
It feels we need cold, cold place.
Cold, cold place.
Oh, my goodness, okay. So anyways, the building is four stories with a fifth story that you can see behind the language planning board review. And when I was here before, the narrative of the text stated that it was four stories. The actual height, the correct height, and the height that is depicted in the renderings is actually five stories. And that is the substantive change that has triggered this plan being sent back to the planning board. And so, just real quick, for the record, as we talk about the site being referred to as 1201 Memorial Drive, what I actually mean is it's roughly half of the block that's located along Memorial Drive between Fifth Avenue and Fourth Avenue. And as you can see here, depicted in this aerial photograph, it's a vacant property along Memorial Drive. And so, the purpose of the redevelopment plan is to facilitate its redevelopment with a mixed-use building that is predominantly residential in nature with first-floor parking as well as a few commercial spaces. The changes in the plan, as I said, are principally, first and foremost, due to an inaccurate building height in the redevelopment plan text that I'll review in just another slide. But while I had the opportunity to come back to all of you with this revised plan, I also went ahead and made a handful of additional amendments, non-substantive changes to it that I think really just strengthened the plan, many of which were at the recommendation of the planning board the last time I was here. So it includes things such as clearly identifying what regulations would be variances versus exceptions during the site plan process, allowing the planning board additional discretion on that design of the rear yard buffer, with the exception, it does maintain that a fence, a six-foot fence is required. Additionally, providing additional clarity that the commercial spaces shall be provided and shall be done so consistent with the concept plan included in the redevelopment plan. Also adding clarity about the number of parking spaces that are required, and in particular, stating that the required number of parking spaces shall not be reduced as a result of EV credits or perhaps shared parking spaces for the shared ride parking spaces. And then lastly, giving the planning board discretion on streetscape furnishings, so think about where benches and whatnot might be located and their style, so that will also be subject to the planning board review. But as I said at the outset, the big change is on the building height. And so, one thing I want to be very clear about, although I'm here for a substantive change on the building height, it is not to the ultimate project that was intended to be regulated. So this rendering shown on the screen is the exact same rendering as was included in your, in the previous version of the redevelopment plan, and this is the building that the previous version of the redevelopment plan was intended to regulate and to permit. As I said, the building height, the narrative, the text itself in the plan was incorrect as it previously stated, the height limitation was four stories, 48 feet. What is depicted in this picture is five stories, 63 feet. And that is what the plan now reads, and that is the substantive change that has triggered me coming back before all of you for this. Specifically, of course, we're here for master plan referral as well as any planning board comments that you might like to make to the council. And so with that, folks, I'm happy to talk about any aspect of the plan, but that is ultimately the conclusion of my very short presentation to all of you. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or to talk about master plan consistency when you're, when and if you're ready. I will say that you do have a resolution that was passed previously on November 20th when I was here, that I think that the Board could continue some of the findings, if you're so inclined. Some of these are no longer relevant as I was able to make those corrections about the various points of clarity that I had reviewed just a few moments ago.
So for the, so the resolution that would come out of this, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, is that whatever we'd already recommended stays, and if there's something else, we'll add to it.
That's correct. It would be just an amendment to this resolution.
To this resolution.
Correct.
So it's not, none of this goes away.
That's correct.
Okay, so and we don't have to repeat it again?
No, you don't have to repeat anything that's already here.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
So Jack will probably prepare the resolution, I'll give him notes. He's probably just going to take this old resolution and just, if there's anything in addition to that we have to add, he'll just supplement.
Okay, okay. So is there, are there any questions from the Board members of our, for the presentation of our witness?
I'd like to ask a question.
Sure.
Not, and you didn't testify about this, but is there some way that we can make the facades of these buildings a little more interesting? You know, and I know it's really not on you, but we end up with boxes with windows. And if you, if you ride down Main Street and take a look at the roof lines of buildings that there, there's something a little bit interesting in almost every one of these buildings. Why can't we build it into what we're approving now?
Okay.
I just throw that out.
Okay, I appreciate the, I appreciate the sentiment that the city's looking for as much interest in variation and just interesting buildings. I would say, right now, the redevelopment plan does require that the buildings shown in the plan are constructed. I think that if the planning board would like to make that comment to the council, I would certainly encourage you to do so if the, if the Board thinks that they'd like to incorporate that into a new resolution. I can also keep that in mind for any future redevelopment that might come to the city and make its way back to the planning board.
Thank you.
Just a question. So the last time we talked about this was four stories with a penthouse.
Yep.
And now it's five stories.
Yeah.
Why can't this just be four stories with a penthouse? What makes it this substantive, we call it a story?
So when, when, let me say this, when I realized the mistake, one of the things I tried to do was work with the language in the redevelopment plan to see how we could, see what the options were really from a legal perspective, and I also talked to the developer about what options there might be with building adjustments. And I don't know that this will answer the heart of your question, but from a language perspective of what's in the plan, in order to, the first part, to facilitate the project that we're looking at, I really don't have, have an ability to, to adjust the language in a way that might, that might mitigate some of the height impact without, without fundamentally changing what we see. From the, working with the developers' perspective and speaking with them, their indication is that they, they believe that this size project is what is necessary in order to produce some of the, some of the things that they would identify as benefits, principally the affordable housing on the property, the 20% set aside, as well as some of the other benefits that they see, such as the, and not to say that I don't see them, but just in terms of passing on the developer's sentiment, but also maintaining the public art, maintaining the commercial space, and some of the elements of the setback in streetscape design that I do think benefit the project. So from the developers' perspective, it's about maintaining an economy of scale and being able to produce those units on the site that support the 20% set aside and some of these other aspects.
I have one other question. When I read through this, I didn't flag it, unfortunately, I recall reading that the commercial space was optional. Did I, did I read that correctly?
No, no, the commercial space is a permitted use, but one of the changes I made in here are to add clarity that the commercial space is not optional, in fact. So I would say, no, it's not optional.
Okay. Maybe I just misread. Thank you.
The only design that it changed.
Correct. The same renderings are included, the same design has been intended all along.
The story is small, setback.
Yeah, correct, yeah, yeah.
But you're just saying, before, did you call the four-story?
Yeah, so right, so let me be clear, the building height is.
I mean, the owner's language was just sort of flaking in and flexible in, and why is there a problem?
I will, I'll defer to all of you to judge that, but I, but I will say, from a, from a legal perspective, having that additional story in the building is a substantial change. It may not feel a substantial change, or it might, it may feel differently to other folks, but from perspective of having to come back before the planning board, I'm obligated to bring this back before you because it's, it's a substantial change in the, in what is written about the, written in regulations about the building.
Second question is, I think you spoke one time before and you told me about, you know, more affordable housing requirements and stuff, and is that still a good answer?
Yeah, that's part of it, yep.
That was kind of, you know, we have, we have so many, I forget what the number was, like 295 or something like that, from RCA or something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Is this, is this 20%, is that going to a percent? I'm interested.
No, so the Lincoln, what you're referring to is the city has, we have an RCA problem, if you will, in the sense that we had an RCA program, it was not implemented properly. The remedy to that unfortunate implementation is through the Lincoln Village project that we talked about on the Home Place site. So that project will, it's more complicated than this, but it will ultimately produce not less than 69 affordable units that will rectify our RCA problem, our mismanagement.
Well, it's 30%.
Yep, yep, this is on top of that. So this project with the 20% set aside is, is separate and apart from that, this will just simply produce additional affordable units available.
Is that satisfying, anything that we owe?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because I thought you said the last time, we only had the RCA problem.
That's correct.
Our other towns, we didn't have a, you know.
So the city has two types of obligations, it's the RCA and rehabilitation. This project will not meet either of those, this will just simply address the general need for affordable housing in the city. But I will say that should the city have an affordable housing obligation in the future, this project will be able to satisfy it.
It's in the bank, I believe.
Yeah, it's in the bank, perfect.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a good way to put it.
Then you have one more of the question. If I recall correctly, the reason why this is a redevelopment plan is because the zoning there doesn't commit this.
That's correct. Yeah, so.
It's instead of fixing the zoning, we do a redevelopment plan.
Yeah, that's correct. So we did a redevelopment plan, one, to fix the zoning, and two, to provide certainty to, to the public, to the council, to the planning board, and to the developer. So this way that the zoning, you know the building, the city knows the building, that it will see constructed in that location in exchange for the redevelopment plan, rather than leaving the design details to the developer.
Oh, so that's what you meant, is this has to get built?
Yes, yes. So if you have a, if you have a project that comes before you on this property, trying to use this redevelopment plan, and it does not look like those renderings, the planning board should not, should not approve it. They won't be able to approve it because it'll be fundamentally in conflict with the redevelopment plan.
Okay, but would you get a real rationale to make use of the redevelopment instead of letting, sort of.
Well, the rationale is, one, to adjust the zoning in order to encourage affordable housing and stationary development. And then the redevelopment plan, the parameters, not only does it accomplish that, but it also gives additional certainty to the, to all parties, essentially, and it gives additional control over how the site can be developed.
It doesn't zone it?
It does, but there are aspects in this redevelopment plan regulations that we could not put into zoning. So for example, we would, we would not be able to require specific architectural facades and designs. We might be able to include some general architectural standards, but it would be subject to interpretation by the developer. We would also have less ability to, to set forth exactly how the architectural standards will be interpreted. Additionally, we have sustainability requirements that we would not be able to require. For example, they're required to participate in the Energy Star multifamily project. That type of green building or sustainability requirement is not permitted in zoning in New Jersey. We're not able to require developers through zoning to simply construct a green building, if you will, but you have the ability to go above and beyond that, above and beyond what's permitted in zoning through redevelopment planning. And so that's an additional advantage.
And then we ask for your questions, if they, if they come here, you know, for some reasons, some stuff. I don't know if you recall, you know, my brother wrote about redevelopment plans, you know, they get, they get the bait exemption from school.
They may, I understand your.
I see a much better way of actually fixing zoning rather than having a patchwork.
I understand.
Anybody else have any other questions to the witness? Anyone from the planning board? Professionals?
Just, we talked about one thing, Beth, the building height in D3, or I'm sorry, E3, it's on page eight. The penthouses are no more than 12 feet high, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so probably should just clarify that because right now it just says they're nowhere than 12 feet.
I'll add that.
And, and to go along with, with the questions, those penthouses would be in addition to the five stories.
Yes, yes. That's the same type, yes, short answer.
Why are you saying they're allowed at penthouses when they're not in the, they're not in the concept plan? So the fifth story is not the penthouse?
The fifth, when you look at the renderings, the fifth story is that setback story, just from a visual perspective, first, that's the fifth story. The penthouse is, if the developer prefers a penthouse, it would be subject to this language that you see in the plan, and is also very similar to what you see in, say, the B district, where you also permit penthouses. And this would permit them the ability to, to, for example, have additional area that might be serviced for an elevator, different mechanicals, et cetera.
So mechanical penthouse, not part of the gross living area, not part of these communities?
It's not, it's unstated, but I say that as a result of viewing their concept plan and their floor plans. The requirement specifically, penthouses are exempt from height restrictions, provided they cover not more than 20% of the main roof area or not more than 12 feet in height with that addition, in height. And further, provided that all building service equipment and appurtenances are enclosed in the penthouse in addition to any permitted use in the zone where located.
You're right, the mechanical penthouses, not part of the.
Correct, yeah.
What? That seemed to contradict what she just said.
The, this plan permits the fifth, the five stories, it's the four full stories, if you will.
Right, we see five stories on here. We see five stories.
Yeah, plus that, yep, plus that fifth story at the top. It would also. I'll add that.
And to go along with the questions, those penthouses would be in addition to the five stories.
Yes, yes, that's the same type, yes, short answer.
Why are you saying they're allowed at penthouses when they're not in the, they're not in the concept plan?
So the fifth story is not the penthouse?
The fifth, when you look at the renderings, the fifth story is that setback story, just from a visual perspective, first, that's the fifth story. The penthouse is, if the developer provides a penthouse, it would be subject to this language that you see in the plan, and is also very similar to what you see in, say, the B district, where you also permit penthouses, and this would permit them the ability to, for example, have additional area that might be serviced for an elevator, different mechanicals, et cetera.
So mechanical penthouse, not part of the enclosed living area, not part of these rooms?
It's not, it's unstated, but I say that as a result of viewing their concept plan and their floor plans. The requirement specifically, penthouses are exempt from height restrictions, provided they cover not more than 20% of the main roof area, or not more than 12 feet in height, with that addition, in height, and further, provided that all building service equipment and appurtenances are enclosed in the penthouse, in addition to any permitted use in the zone where located.
You're right, the mechanical penthouses, not part of the...
Correct, yeah.
What? That seemed to contradict what she just said.
The, this plan permits the five stories, it's the four full stories, if you will.
Right, we see five stories on here. We see five stories.
Yep, plus that fifth story at the top. It would also allow for penthouse areas that would be, I say, I anticipate that there are going to be elevator penthouses and mechanical space as well, but it is not required pursuant to this plan. The penthouses are permitted to be not more than 20% of the main roof area at 12 feet.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But let's clarify, when we're talking about this, we're talking about having a penthouse on top of the roof of the fifth story.
Yes, yes.
So now, I don't know, are you saying that they are, they are limited to mechanical penthouses, or they are not?
They are not.
So they could be part of the unit, instead. They could be a bigger unit.
Yes.
So, so, you know, then again, you know, again, I'm from New York, so, you know, this whole story of floor, a penthouse, you know, usually a penthouse just means it has a smaller footprint than a floor more, it's still a story. So now we're talking about six stories. So if I, if I read this correctly, it'd be 20%, it's limited to 20% of what?
20% of the main roof area.
So is that the roof of the fourth floor, or the roof of the fifth floor?
I would interpret that as the roof of the fourth floor.
Fourth floor?
Correct.
So whatever that is, so you have another 20% of that on top of the roof of the fifth floor.
And is there a setback on that?
There's no, there's no required setback.
There's no specified setback?
Yeah, there's no required setback. I would say the limitation, if the board's looking for one, is the requirement that it be consistent with the renderings included in the plan.
Which, the penthouses are not on the plan.
Correct, you do not, they're not depicted from the, from Memorial, or from any of the other vantage points.
So...
So we're really putting the elevator in the middle of this, okay, it's the state of all things, aren't there protrusions in the roof?
I would defer that to the developer. They're going to be obligated to produce a set of architectural plans that do not have, they're required to be substantially consistent with the renderings that you see in here. And so to the extent that you have an architectural plan with significant roof protrusions for penthouses, and the board deems that that's substantially, not substantially consistent, then I would recommend that the board make that finding and find that the applicant is seeking a site plan approval that is inconsistent with the redevelopment plan.
Well, and then I'll play devil's advocate, you know, the developer can say, oh, you know, come on, you know, if you jump in, you see, you know, if you had given me a plan of the roof, or a shot of the rendering of the roof, or above it, that I can see if there are protrusions. They say, no, there are, there are actual protrusions here, but you can't see them in the rendering, so my architectural plans are consistent that there's rendering, so, I mean, you know, in one way you're saying this redevelopment plan gives us the power to say, you have to build this, but already now, you know, there seems to be escape clauses and stuff, but then, you know, these penthouses.
Well, it's also because the rendering doesn't show it.
All right, but that's what's...
It doesn't show it.
So how do we say it's inconsistent when they give us architectural drawings? I think architectural drawings show us something that these renderings say.
I think that's part of the, I think that's clearly part of the substantial consistency evaluation. If their, if their architectural plans depict something that is significant, whether it's a penthouse or any other building feature that's simply not on this plan, then I think that that is a deviation from the renderings included in the plan, and it's got to be part of the planning board's findings. There, a statement that, well, it wasn't shown, therefore it can't be consistent or inconsistent, I think is very faulty.
I agree with that, totally, you know, developers.
It does say, "Mechanical equipment other than utilities providing services to the building shall be shielded so as to not be visible from adjacent streets and lots."
Yeah, okay, but the thing is, now, we're talking about, at least I was under the impression that the modification of the language, you know, from four-story penthouse, four-plus penthouse, we're talking about, you know, this actual fifth floor was previously characterized as a penthouse, but now we have a fifth story, and now we're talking about additional penthouses above that, and that may or may not be limited to being mechanical penthouses. So, you know, one double the office to two drawings of another 20% of UBS being, you know, cautious of four.
75 feet.
I don't know what the height limitation could be.
Well, 12 feet is your max. 12 feet above, 12 feet above, right, 12 feet above the 63.
Correct. But I would urge the board that if you have a plan that depicts a height of 75 feet, that is not consistent with the plan, it is not consistent with the renderings, they may be able to cite the penthouse language, but if you're looking at the plan and it shows what appears to be a sixth story, that is a fundamental inconsistency.
Well, I don't, I don't argue with you, but I don't know how it is, because the language allows for it. So the language is inconsistent with the renderings. And I'm not in the way, it's just the way, so, you know, so regardless, it says, it says in the language. Because the language does seem to allow the five stories, plus penthouses not exceeding 20% of the main roof area, which is unspecified to be the fourth floor.
I mean, I was making some of my own comments that I was going to review with the board, and that was one of them. We probably need to...
And it's 20% less than the fourth floor?
Correct.
20% less than the fourth floor?
No, 20% of the fourth...
Yeah, 20% of...
20% of the fourth floor.
Yeah, sorry, not less of, thank you.
Not, so it's not 80%, it's 20%.
Right.
Okay, so 20%, let's just say in theory, if we take a look at this depiction here, this rendering, 20% is roughly one of these squares, one of these pieces.
Sure, yeah.
Because you see that there are four of them going across, this is Memorial affrontage. You have four of them going across, that's, let's say 25% a piece, one of them is 25%. So this penthouse area is essentially those, the length of four of those windows, somewhere on the fifth floor, above the fifth floor.
Thank you.
So it's somewhere like here, we don't have it, yeah. So it's somewhere above that. So the fifth floor is already setback, the penthouse will be 20% somewhere, it could be actually in the same, it could be have the same setback. Okay. But it's only 20% of the roof.
Correct.
Does the 20% include the elevators, the mechanicals? Like, are the mechanicals included in that 20%? Yes?
Yes, I mean, if you have just simply a HVAC piece of equipment, I don't think that qualifies as part of a penthouse.
But like an elevator.
But if it's contained within something such as an elevator, yes.
So can I ask another thing, is that, is it possible that the elevator shafts are going to be even higher than that?
Than the 12 feet?
Than the 12 feet. Of the, so you've got a fifth floor, 12 feet, where does the elevator shaft stop?
I think the 12 feet, it needs to contain the elevator shaft.
The elevator shaft, okay, okay. So there's probably two elevators at least in this building, if not more than that.
I would assume so.
Okay, okay.
I guess the thing is, you know, does the board want, in other words, is the board happy with that 20% penthouse, that it's not limited just mechanical space, or is it going to be more than 20%?
I feel like it's the language should be in there. You can have the penthouse, whatever it says, 3A there, but it can't be habitable space.
But this, just let's be, let's understand also then, like, let's say, Michael, if we say that, let's just say that, this is a recommendation to the council, the council can say, no, or yes. This is a recommendation from the board saying that, that's what this is. This is nothing more than that.
Correct.
Okay. I would find it hard, just like you said, Mike, 20%, once you put in two elevators, there's nothing, there's not much left. I'm just saying, I'm just thinking, but, I don't know. What, anybody else's thoughts on this, from the board?
I think Michael suggested...
That it's not habitable.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I'm fine with them using that rooftop space for mechanicals. I mean, as long as it's shielded, and Michael probably put them on the fourth floor anyway, wherever they put it, they need for mechanicals, fine, but they don't get another floor.
I understand, and 20% of that space.
Well, let me ask you, is the penthouse meant to be on the roof of the fourth floor, or on the roof of the fifth floor?
It is not specific. Penthouses are, in this language, taken from other zone districts that you have here, is really intended for, yes, additional living space, as some developers will use it, and sometimes it's used for the elevator penthouse to accommodate the elevator, but I don't have, my expectation, but not guarantee or certainty, is that it's likely going to be on the fourth story, but I don't want to represent that as a promise to the planning board.
Yeah, again, you use the zoning resolution, you say, so, you know, crossing from definitions. I don't know what definition the city that was part of the state of New Jersey uses, if we go up to penthouses, that they tell you it's a protrusion from the highest level, or, you know, roof or whatever, so. So we may be talking about not going up to the fifth floor?
In terms of where that penthouse would be located?
Yeah, I mean, well, I assume, I gather, I assume the elevator's got to go up to the fifth floor, right? So if you're getting an elevator motor room, it's going to be above the fifth floor.
Yeah, so, and let me tell you, the city does define penthouses, it's defined as a roofed enclosure up to 12 feet in height on top of a building and occupying not more than 20% of the main roof area, which I recognize is not that helpful, because it's largely consistent with what the redevelopment plan says, but just to your point of how is it defined?
So, again, it depends on how you define the main roof area, right?
Well, the main roof area, from what you said, was fourth floor.
I don't know maybe that is.
That's what Beth had said.
That's my interpretation of it, yes.
20% of the fourth floor, not the fifth floor, which is smaller.
The way I hear the definition you read is that it's a protrusion on the, on the main roof.
Yeah, yes.
So it would be on the fourth floor.
Correct, and that language mirrors what's in the redevelopment plan. The main roof area.
And then walking, walking window, walk through windows, going around the fifth story?
Certainly to the front and the rear, but there's an area on either side that I think, that I anticipate is going to be the elevators, and that's where you're likely to see the penthouse, but again, that's what I anticipate, not what I can guarantee.
And we don't see that. We don't see any of those, right?
Correct.
Maybe the motor room is, I have, you know, a question, motor room being above, maybe it's still where it's, with the down garage, but I don't think they have a motor room above.
I mean, I think what, I think what's going to drive that is whether or not that fifth story are independent units that they need elevator service to, versus the second story of a unit which begins on the first, on the fourth floor, and that's part of what I can't...
Oh, they're like the duplexes.
Yeah, that's what I can't state with certainty for the board. My expectation is that, but not my guarantee, my expectation is that they need elevator service to the fourth story, but that could be incorrect, and that's why I say I don't want to make any promises or guarantees, because where those penthouses will be located.
Yeah, we just don't see it. I can imagine how you're saying like that, if the body goes to the fourth floor, and, you know, the penthouse would look like a part of that setback fifth story, you know, the motor room is up there adjacent to that, all the walls, but we just don't see it.
Yeah, is there a reason why we don't see it?
It is...
Like, is there a reason why we just have not seen it? Because I know that you're saying that it's going, it could exist, it might exist, it probably will exist, but it's not depicted here in any way.
No, there are, the renderings included are obviously limited in the sense that it provides a view from Memorial, and it just doesn't provide 360-degree views. I will say that if you look at the redevelopment plan, you can see the Fifth Avenue frontage, the Memorial, and you can get a little bit of a picture of what the Fourth Avenue might look at if you start to extrapolate, but I agree that it doesn't show all the mechanicals, whether or not, that's because they're simply not visible from these vantage points, or they haven't been added, is unclear.
Right, but it's, but it's the penthouse that we're not seeing, and does that mean that when you're saying that we don't have, the depiction is like, is it because you can only see it from Fourth Avenue? Or that you can only see it on the west side of this building, these penthouses? Because it just doesn't seem to make sense to me that they're not here. I mean, that there's no sign of them. And it, I mean, it's, we're, this has to be built, as you said, this has to be built. But we're just, we just don't know what that sixth floor is going to look like, where it is, where is it going to be?
Your fifth floor is a sixth floor?
If it is, well, essentially it is a sixth floor.
Well, no.
It's fifth floor plus 12 feet.
It could be on the fourth floor, on the roof, it could be part of the fifth floor built.
What?
I mean, that can be a more, I would like to change the language and say, you can't have habitable space in the penthouses. But the thing is, people bet this, because we can't see them in the renderings when we get to site plan time.
Yes.
If we see something we don't like, we can just say it's not compatible.
Okay.
If we see something we like, we can say, okay, so if we see something we don't like, we can say, it's not compatible with the concept.
Yeah, I think you have two points of protection. One is just that, whether or not it's consistent with the concept, and also the protection that mechanical equipment, et cetera, must be shielded.
Right, right. I'm fine with what you're saying, Mike.
We could add the word habitable to that language under item B3, building height.
Not habitable.
Not, yeah, penthouses are exempt from height restrictions, provided they are not habitable, comma, cover not more than 20%, and then go on.
But, but, but there is a restriction, because there's 12 feet.
Yeah. That's also stated in here, but...
Okay.
Saying that they would be exempt if they meet these certain elements of criteria, such as the 20%, the 12 feet in height, and if the board is inclined, not habitable.
Right, I think that, I think that that's something that, I mean, I don't know, we'd have to pull the board on whether or not they're, that that's something of interest to them, but once again, it is a recommendation to the council and the mayor and council. How do you guys feel about adding non-habitable?
I'm for that. I think Mike's comment is well-taken, I think.
Okay, all right, well, it's, all right. Anything else that, anybody else would like to question the witness? Planning board? Nothing?
Just one other point of clarification. Does that 20% include, or, I'm sorry, are the enclosures for mechanical equipment included in that 20%?
It depends on, let's see, your definition, if it's included within a roofed enclosure, it would be included within that penthouse requirement. If it's just simply, let's say, an HVAC unit, that would not be within a building enclosure, and that would just simply be subject to the screening requirements.
Okay, and is a fenced area, or a, we've required in many of these developments throughout the city, we require the mechanical equipment to be fenced, but the...
I don't know that I require a fence specifically, but it requires screening, which I will say often takes the form of a fence.
So that if we require it to be screened...
They shall be, shall be shielded, so as not to be visible from adjacent streets and lots. The plan doesn't state how they shall be shielded, I think that's subject to the planning board's discretion as to whether you want a fence, or masonry enclosure, or anything along those lines.
So that if we require a fence as that screening, that's included in the 20%?
It would not be, it would not be within, the definition of a penthouse is a roofed enclosure, so if you're simply providing a fence around the mechanical equipment, that would not be a roofed enclosure, that is subject to the 20%.
As long as you have a roof, as long as that's all right?
Yes, essentially, yes.
That's good to keep in mind.
Any other questions? All right, let's open up questions.
I have one, one of us, going back to Jim's original question. Where, where in here do you think it says that the commercial spaces shall be included?
It says...
I just want to make sure we have appropriate language. I just want to make sure we have appropriate language.
It's on page, I believe it's under the architectural requirements, go let me find it. It is page nine, item G1, exterior elevation shall be substantially consistent. The last line, this requirement shall include but is not limited to the placement of non-residential uses, which are depicted on the concept plans.
I don't know that that's clear that it's mandatory, though. Because the other section, and we talked about this before, the other section is the permitted principal uses. Deviation, and this is on page six. Deviations from the following shall be considered use variances, deviations. Ground floor non-residential use permitted in the business district, residential lobbies, utilities, amenities, parking. It doesn't mandate those things. It just says, if the ground floor doesn't, if one of these things is not part of that ground floor, then it would be a use variance. So, so if, for example, if, if there's something other than parking, residential lobbies, utilities, amenities, or non-residential uses, it would be a use variance. Now, off the top of my head, I, I can't think of what that might be, but, but other than apartments.
So if the board would like to strengthen that, I'm happy to. I will say you've got it listed as a permitted use. You have that requirement under architectural standards. You also have the three retail spaces depicted within the site's concept plan, which the board could also utilize to define substantial consistency or not when they identify where their commercial uses are located.
I would suggest that, that number one, add, which shall be constructed on the ground floor.
I don't have any objections to that.
Yeah, because that's what we're, that's what our concern is.
And does it say like how much commercial space is included in the specific?
It, on the concept plan, it provides floor areas listed, but the plan itself does not identify those. It allows the planning board to find whether or not it's substantially consistent with the, the three spaces identified. Yeah, it's, here, I'll read, it's, there are three spaces at 437 square feet, 500 square feet, and 926 square feet.
So now you're saying those have to be built?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because it was required.
Yeah, it's, so it's required in the concept plan, depiction of the concept plan is required in the architectural standards. And if the board would like to add further strength in the permitted uses, we can do that as well.
Yes.
And it may be as simple as changing that heading from permitted principal uses to required principal uses, but there may be a few other ways to do that as well.
Is there anything else you have, Jeff?
No, I would just say, I don't know that you necessarily have to say, maybe say permitted and required uses.
Sure.
And then have after B, an and A and D. So you have A, B, and C.
Sure.
Meaning that that ground floor has to have each of these components.
Right, right. Any other, anything else from the board members? All right, just have a, before we get to the public, just have a question for you for, as far as process is concerned. There's a resolution, the resolution that was provided to the council, it had like four items on there, okay? Those four items, now you're coming back. Now we're going to go back, we're going to give the council, mayor council, other, other requests. And then obviously, once they're, they're ready to build, they're going to come back to us. So how do we know as a planning board, what was, what the council agreed to or didn't agree to? How do we know that? How do we find that out? So when they come back, how do we know? Or do we, or is it just included in our packet, the resolution of what? I mean, how, how does that work?
I don't know the.
I don't know how we find out.
I don't know the planning board's typical procedure, but what I could do is simply share the adopted version of the redevelopment plan with the planning board.
Okay.
Presumably it gets adopted and then you have that available.
Then we would, then we would have to look on our, on our request to see if all of those things were included. Okay, so we would have to figure that out.
Well, at the same time, when, when an application actually comes before the board.
Right.
A copy of the final plan that was approved by council should be.
Should be.
Part of the pack.
Okay. And we could also ask that of CCH to say, okay, of all the things that we requested, which ones made it or which ones didn't? Okay, okay.
Sure.
All right, so we'll, that way we'll know. Okay, I'd like to open it up to the, to the public for questions for this applicant or this witness. Any, anyone from the public has any questions? Okay, any, all right, let's, can I get a motion for comments from the public?
Sure. Second.
Okay. Anyone want to ask any, have any comments about this project of what was presented here today? Okay, motion to close, public.
Second.
Okay. All right. Jeff, do you want to go through what would be in a resolution here?
So I just had a few comments that I was writing down.
Okay.
In general, add that commercial space shall be mandatory. The fifth story is to be setback for the rendering attached, renderings attached to the plan. The penthouse shall be not more than 12 feet in additional height inclusive of all bulkheads, stairs, and elevator shafts. I think there's a suggestion maybe to define which, which roof is the main roof area as it relates to penthouses. Is it the fourth floor? Is it the fifth floor?
Well, it would be, what we're suggesting, I believe, was that, that it's essentially above the fifth floor, that we're saying not inhabitable. The 20% not to be inhabited.
Correct, but the 20% is it calculated from the fourth floor or is it calculated from the fifth floor?
I believe that it was from the fourth.
Yeah, I think the decision, it should be clear that it's calculated from the fourth.
If that's true. If it's calculated from the fourth, obviously I would prefer it from the fifth, but I believe that it's stated as the fourth, yeah.
Right. As far as page six, permitted and, permitted and required principal uses for A, and then we're going to add for A, B, and C under number one, ground floor, we're going to add the word and, or suggest that we add the word and. In, on page eight, E3, we're going to add, "Penthouses are exempt from height restrictions provided they are not habitable, cover no more than 20% of the main roof area, and are not, are not more than 12 feet in additional height," and the rest of it is the same. In G1, we're going to add at the end, "which shall be constructed on the, on the ground floor according to the concept plan and concept building renderings." And I believe that were, those were my only comments.
Did we, did we miss anything? Anyone? Okay. If we have nothing else, then can I get a motion to, for the approval of these modifications with all, everything that was just mentioned by Mr. Beekman? Can I get a motion to pass, Mr. Beekman?
What am I, I'll move it. What am I moving?
You're moving, you're moving the fact that.
Approval of the recommendations.
Approval of these recommendations to council.
So.
I'll second. James Bonanno?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
I attended tonight for basically the two other applications. I did not attend the November 20th, '23 meeting on this because at the council level, I was a no vote on this. So I said like, if I'm no at council, why attend this and cause a quagmire or whatever? So I'm either not eligible because I went in on the November 20th to vote on this or I'll simply vote present or abstain.
If, if you don't want to vote, I would say vote abstain.
Abstain. Just because, again, at the council level, I was a no on this project.
Daniel Shinameo?
I think that was it.
Yeah, you're eligible to vote on this, yeah, because this, this is a hearing on what's in front of you tonight.
Jennifer Sauter, yes. Vice Chair Gunean?
Yes.
Chairwoman Kurzak?
Yes.
Thank you, folks. Okay.
So I will make a list. I'll send that to Jack. I'll make sure.
Please copy that.
Copy, yes.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So, second.
What? Oh, I'm sorry. The next meeting that is going to be on April 1st, 7 o'clock. The meet, the meeting, the second meeting in March is canceled?
March 18th, 2024.
March 18th is canceled, so April 1st is our next meeting, 7 p.m.